Good evening, everyone. We're gonna go ahead and cut the meeting to order at this time. Please turn all cell phones, electronic devices to off or vibrate. Mr. Bob McDaniel, I'm sorry. Could you please leave this in our prayer place, sir? I'll get it.
Heavenly Father, as we enter this Christmas season, may we fully recognize the importance of your birth. Without that, how would we stand in here giving a prayer? Without that, we wouldn't have churches and cathedrals and fine art and music, all in your name. We wouldn't have the giving part of humanity that exists in some people today. But Heavenly Father, all of that is meaningless until Christ is born within our own hearts, within our own lives. Because with that, we get freedom from guilt, freedom from emptiness, and a purpose in life. So as we carry that goodness forward with Christ in our hearts, may we display that in all of our public meetings. And as in Christ's most precious name we pray, amen.
Now, for the allegiance to the bloodline of the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. All right, sorry, I picked on myself. All right, consider the free rules of minutes of the November 19, 2014 meeting. Does everybody have time for meetings?
I don't think that's all that I know. These perimeters, Mr. Ford still stays in Illinois? Or is this just sitting with that meeting, so I don't offend Chamberlain? It's okay, it is. It seems they're part of that. Right, okay.
Small, small areas were in consideration. Few, few minutes. Mr. Rick Moore, if you could lock on the rock.
Anything else? Nothing else? All right, motion to accept the minutes as presented with corrections.
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All favors say aye. All right, thank you, thank you. All right, visitors who are not on the regular agenda will be given the opportunity to address the council on any subject at this time. Is anyone present not on the agenda? I just got ready to jump up and down, I give everybody just really quiet. We were just discussing, that's what delayed the meeting a little bit, is Wednesday is the national day of mourning for previous President Bush that has passed. So I'm only telling council this because they aren't going to be closing some of the state and federal offices on Wednesday. So we were just discussing it. So if y'all would get back with Mr. Attorney as far as your opinion on that. We can't go right now in the meeting, so one at a time later, please present that to him. All right?
Regarding the closing of the studio.
We were discussing.
Do you have a day off for a big day off?
It would have to be.
Okay. It's mature.
It'd be a full day.
And this is state. I thought it was just in the morning, but he is saying it's a whole day.
I prefer that instead of one at a time, that really does, God would help me exactly. If you want to do one, I feel like we should close y'all since then.
I don't think so.
If anybody, if y'all have the opposition to it, like Mel, then you won't do it. I mean, that's telling them, I mean, don't go. If anybody in the opposition to it.
No opposition. No opposition.
Okay, yeah, no opposition.
No opposition.
Okay, same. Okay. Thank you, I'm sorry about that. It was not on the agenda, we did get on the agenda after the passing, so we apologize for that. Can I also tonight ask a question? Because we're gonna be on board and sit here holiday now. Is that approved? Well, I mean, city hall is closed, so.
What's your point, Steve?
I'm just saying, normally city hall is closed, if I sit here holiday, we get paid holiday pay.
Well, you're not gonna get paid holiday pay.
No, but the day can fly.
I'm just saying. I don't get paid either. I get paid the same amount.
My office is like.
It'll be paid, but we don't have holiday pay.
So Brent, are you gonna schedule no fires for that day?
I'm sure, I wish I could have done that.
Because I think that's putting up just for.
Thank y'all very much, sorry for that off the wall. All right, we're going to change the agenda up just a tad. We're gonna jump down to Agenda Item 10, so Mr. Paul can get the audits done. So the City Council may consider, discuss, or take action on the audit report from the Gator Polite for the purposes of our calls.
So this was actually one of the, my name is Paul Thomas, I'm an associate of Gator Polite in CPA Natalie. Everybody got one, that's good. Almost ran out. Is this a good place to stand and talk?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. This is actually one of the tightest run organizations we've seen in a long time. All bills are cleared by the Board before they're spent, which is great. And we call this a 100% ours, because we review 100% of the receipts. It's very rare that we actually get to do that. This is an organization small, I just don't think we're ever gonna do that. So if you wanna look on page three, you'll see that. Go to the next page. Y'all have about $93,000 worth of assets, about 42,000 days in cash. Total revenues for the year 2017 were $112,000, total expenses were $99,000. So you made about $30,000, if you ever pick a room. I'm sorry, $12,000, but you spent about $20,000 on new assets. So you lost the equipment for downtown, the lights and the trash cans and to improve downtown. On the next page, page five, you can see a list of these things in this file. Where did I just fill? I'm here to answer any questions you may have. Another, some discussion about whether the hotel tax money was being, hotel occupancy tax money was being spent appropriately. All of our research leads believe that it had been spent very well through the city council, there's been a lot of people into the city. Terrorism is what it's all about, you know, we seem to be getting on the right track with that.
Your recommendations?
Yes, recommendations. We made three recommendations on the company letter there. The primary one is that we need to operate under a budget, she's already worked on that. Number two was, what was number two?
Number two was the membership.
Membership, yes, keeping track of the membership in her accounting software. So right now she does it in two different pieces of software, one's handwritten, the other one's software, so who recommends? And these are just recommendations, that she moved it all into one system. So when she actually prints out a financial statement, it will be just accurate to date. And the third one was?
The third one was just the accounting of the cash flow during the event.
That's right, the main cash flow. And we don't have any problem with the way it's being done now, but if you could be hyping it up a little bit, that would probably be helpful. I don't, we don't see.
Any recommendation on how to keep it hyped up?
Well, you know, right now y'all have three Board members that account it, so it's hard to get it tighter than that, so we just, one of the main reasons is we just need to break it down, so how it's gonna happen, a policy passed by the Board.
So basically, what we need is written policies on all three of these.
Well, the second two, the first one is, I don't know, I don't know if that actually requires or asks for a policy on.
What says implement a written policy regarding the process of creating annual budget?
Yes.
Include the regular budget review.
And actually do the budget, that was the primary thing. Are you speaking about, are you speaking about the city or are you speaking about the chamber? Oh, not the chamber, strictly the chamber. This is just the chamber. So the chamber does at least one event a month, which, I mean, its chambers extremely active compared to the other chambers in the state of Texas, the chambers that we've done work on. It's extremely active, they bring a lot of people into town, y'all should be very proud, actually. We require the press.
So we need to come up with three written policies. And how we're wanting to make those decisions.
And implement those, right.
But did this include the hotel motel tax?
Yes, 42,000 dollars to do the hotel motel tax.
Okay.
Well, basically, if we got it in there now, that's probably coming in for a year.
Well, it's a little bit less than that for a year.
My question, I guess, is, do these also apply to the hotel motel tax funds? I.e., we have chamber funds, and we can apply these to the chamber funds?
Right.
These policies?
Yes.
And then we have the hotel motel tax funds, and we need to apply these same rules to that?
Yes, if, so when the hotel motel tax sponsors an event?
Right.
The proceeds of that come back and they're unrestricted. So the dinner, the Hunter's Dinner.
Understand that.
But they were really sponsored, they just, they pay some salary, for the rest of their pay, they pay some, they pay just general operating funds, proceeds and things like that. Whenever she does promotions for the city. So, but when they come back, when those events are done, then the money comes back and it's all unrestricted at that point.
Where did, just, where did the funds come from to the Hunter's Dinner? Are they coming out of?
Right now, they're coming out of local rate.
Membership, the membership, I mean.
The operating capital, it's a membership.
So special event sponsorships? Lot of sponsors, lot of local sponsors, a lot of local sponsors.
Right, and then those proceeds can be rolled into the chamber general fund?
Budget, right, the budget. So in the accounting system, she will keep track of both funds in this one accounting system. So she'll keep track of them the same way?
Some of the advertising for the Hunter's Dinner comes out of the pot.
I don't know about that, I don't think so. Advertising for the Hunter's Dinner comes out of the hotel fund? We didn't see that.
Not this year, some of it did, 2017 now.
Yeah, we didn't see that in 17, so the answer to that question is that the payment was out. So we had the internet for the, the hotel tax pay for some salary and the internet for the visitor sent up.
Well, that's basically, it's a community center.
Community center.
Our city center.
$69 a month.
Any questions? You got anything else?
No, that's all I have, thank you very much for the work, we appreciate it.
That is, is the chamber is reflected in certain areas like his and Ben's, things like that. How many people are in the motel, how many people buy groceries, blah, blah, blah. You can't make that determination, you know?
I don't know.
Unless all good and positive and great for the community. People in town and all that being disseminated in the business, I disagree.
I can't tell you how much, I mean, I don't know what the turnover rate for money and dollars is.
Rick, you know, have any kids in the motel?
No, and that's one of the things that has been addressed, that we're going to start tracking that.
But you're on a committee with the hotel man, hotel manager, he's never.
We haven't had any questions right now. A lot of that, that's one of the things that we're going to start tracking.
There's a study that can be done just for the hotel motel, the traffic that we currently have, and then how we can increase that traffic. And we're seeking proposals right now. I'm not sure how the chamber wants to pay for it, whether it be out of their, the regular chamber funds, or we can purchase it through the hotel motel tax. But after we get these proposals in, I think we're seeking three of them. We can get a better idea of the scope of what we want them to do, and then, and we can take that to the chamber and present that, let them make that decision on what can be purchased through hotel motel tax funds, and then they need to make the rest of that through chamber funds, and they'll make that decision on their own, but.
The same law is pretty clear, not wanting to use hotel motel tax.
I know, but I'm not, I'm not on that committee, and, but that's, then we migrate all that to you guys and let y'all sort it out. But there is something in the works to go ahead and get that going. That way we can, we can figure out exactly where we're at and where we want to be, you know? And, because if you talk about hotels, okay, if you want another hotel in town, first you gotta convince somebody there's me, you know? And if we, if we don't have any numbers, then, you know, it's hard to base any facts on, you know, numbers you don't have, you know? So if we can, if we can lay that foundation, if that's where we want to go, then we at least need numbers to talk about, so. But, like I said, we've been talking to three different companies that can go in, and they'll do a survey of the hotels, the people there, they'll talk to the owners, they'll talk to travelers that strive, or people passing through. And they're trying to identify where they're from, why they're passing through. They'll talk to citizens, you know, maybe they have antinocles that come in once a year or something like that, and.
So it's curious, and I'm not against a lot of sort of market there.
Right.
But you know, I see RVs out there.
Right.
I see them serving food.
Right.
And I see, you know, a lot of ethnic festivals happening because of that.
Right.
But I'm just wondering how much of this money is disseminated in the community for these events? And maybe what you're going with there, tell us some of that story.
Well, and we're hoping to answer some of these questions, because, I mean, it's hard to tell right now, you know? Even if we talk to the business owners today, they can tell us history, you know? Right. But they may not be able to tell us how many people that would be working here, for instance, Matt's, Matt's, or, yeah, our gas, you know, contractor? You know, if they're not staying here, why not? If we had hunters coming in, not staying here, why? You know, do they have an RV out there, is there a, are they driving a rental? You know? I think, but it's land plus, there's quite a few people who commute back and forth Angeles low. And, you know, so, you know, they deserve, that stay at Angeles, you know? And it's about identify, where they're staying, and why. That's what the platform of the study may be.
She's in the way of the chamber.
Well, when you talk about, you know, chamber minister.
Okay.
Yeah.
So at that, at that rate, our number, because I believe they call the turnover rate seven and a half, so every dollar that comes into town turns over seven and a half times.
Right.
Dollar is not gonna be that big.
Right.
You know, I would guess two and a half to three and a half.
Right.
Maybe four.
But that's the study, that's what you're gonna come up with, is a dollar figure like that. We're just talking about the Hunter's Dinner, brought about 300, 350 new residents, new
faces to town, from people from out of town.
Right, and we don't know if they stayed or not, you know? I mean.
Well, you can look, you can look at the hotel at night and figure, most of them were most of them stayed.
Well, sure, sure, but, but you don't have the heart to do that.
That's right, you know, it's all guess, it's all estimates, but we have some pretty good numbers.
So, what you're talking about, good, and great, I got, I guess, but that has nothing to do with hotel, hotel tax.
Okay, and I don't, I'm not, I'm not saying it is or doesn't, I'm just saying.
But it does affect.
We have a study, you know, that we can go get, and how do y'all sort that out, and when I buy it? It really doesn't affect the City Council right now, you know, that's something to fight out is through the chamber, so, but.
I just wanted to be sure, we have two different, two different things going on.
Absolutely, well, yeah, and that's why I'm really, you know, having that about separately, you know, my funds from the chamber funds, and, you know, that's.
That's it.
Right, right, right.
She actually watches that very closely.
Yes.
She doesn't take money out of the hotel tax, more than ever.
Right, right. So. All right, any questions for Paul? Thank you. Thank you, sir, appreciate you very much, we appreciate y'all. We'll see y'all. Give you a minute if you wanna try to escape. Thank you. Be careful on home.
Thank you.
All right, City Council may consider, discuss, or take action to appoint a committee to review proposed changes to the charter. Oh, I apologize, my phone got me. All right, I gotta go back to 10 because I failed to say. Need a motion to accept the audit as presented. The move. Second? Three? All favors say aye. All right, all right, sorry about that, that was totally my fault, got to hurry. All right, we'll do the flap again. City Council may consider, discuss, or take action to appoint a committee to review proposed changes and updates to the charter. This was an agenda item that Ms. Christian brought up at the last meeting, and basically legal states the fact that you have to have a committee in order to start looking into it, as far as modifying, updating it, and getting it more current. How does that, just to say so? I would propose that since she brought it up, she would be the head of the committee.
That's a great idea.
There is that. Pat, how many do you have to be on the committee?
You know, I think originally our charter committee was about 10, 12, 15. I would say something near 12, 15 at least. I think it just depends on, if y'all saw the complication, there was mention of the charter provisions, and so we've got some things that are outdated which need to be changed, but in addition to that, there's things that need to be changed. It hasn't been timed, it's not really applicable anymore, so.
Well, I think the last update was 1964, 1965.
We're chartered, I can update, and we had one election, I guess, in the term limits, that was like relatively recently.
I think it was a matter of change from the recent one versus?
No, that's, that was a settlement of that lawsuit, that was a charter change by a court action. But I guess the last charter election that was determined was what reflected.
The only way a charter can be changed is presented, then there's a vote, is that the regular election? So it'll be aiming for next year, remember to get this into elections, that means it is about a year. I didn't make sure we put that in.
Yeah. Eleven months. Do it.
So she's gonna be the head, she nominates the committee, is that how that works?
No, I mean, I would have the council appoint a committee, you know, that way, who needs to pick up charter, will be my head, y'all, y'all have some nominations.
I would say she can make recommendations, or all the recommendations, bring it to the council.
If y'all have a need to go on and get started, yeah.
I would get a cross-section of businessmen in and citizens just from all walks of life, maybe some open ones, some under ones.
If we focus it to 10, pretty regular, maybe they're working in.
I would suggest that somebody from the law enforcement be on there. So five to 10, you're gonna be fine, five to 10, you should.
Maybe two councilmen, or three.
I wouldn't do two, three, I would do more than two.
Two councilmen, so myself and another, and then maybe more than six.
I would have at least, I'd have five citizens, that'd be a seven, the one odd number, so that probably did five citizens, mission difference.
So Pat, isn't this where you do any pardons?
No.
And the, because we've re-cutified two years ago.
No, it just came in.
I believe that was the ordinance.
What was it saying?
Complication, that just came in, that's what's here. This is for the.
We'd say eight or 10,000 dollars two years ago, re-cutified.
But they just gotta be bicycle.
Is that what you sent me, Tom?
Yes.
For two years, we didn't publish.
Yes, I was what I asked last year, the first part of the year.
Wow.
So that's, that's what they basically give, what y'all paid for is now coming, the first cut.
Should we integrate all the alcohol, all the Q R, which is all that stuff?
All those FBA's.
Charter, right. Okay, but, not to get off, but from the time that we had hired them, to date, we were giving them all those updates. Oh, really? Yes, so they went through legal, and they went to them while they were doing the complication. So what you just said is to be included in it.
I don't think it is, it says.
Okay. Is that there? On the, on the ordinance, okay, we had sent those to the law firm who is re-cutified. Right, they did not get worked into the ordinance, okay? When we received it, we rolled it in, bring it in there, so we sent that back and told them to add that in. And we're going through it on the city, you know, we're gonna form our own little committee in, with city employees, with myself, Bonita, Cory, and we're gonna go through, and, because they've given a review of what they've done, and we can go back and check what they've done, and if there are any other changes that need to be made, we can, we need to get back with them. This is just a preliminary draft for us to go through it, to make these changes, and to make sure everything has been added in since it got to me the first time. So we're gonna do that on our end. And the manager's notes, I was gonna mention it to you guys, because y'all might wanna also participate, and, which would be fine, just, you know, raise your hands, and we can give you a copy of it, you can start.
And what is it, you texted it, sir? Is that a preliminary draft?
That is the preliminary draft that we received from the law firm that re-cutified.
Those it's, or as, you know, we don't have an election in April.
Right, right, no, they're. Right, yeah.
I'm just saying, what you texted it.
Right, that is exactly what we got, and that's what we are also gonna review. So y'all can review it on your end, and, because we're gonna go through, you know, back when, maybe in 1964, that's what they did, is elections in April, I don't know. Yeah. Right, but, you know, and, but they don't know this, you know, so, but they just need to go in and verify that all the information's accurate, there's gonna be some changes, some additions, you know, and then we can send that back to them and go forward.
Sorry, I don't know about them.
But the charter will be different, it's separate, that's just the city ordinances. She's gonna need to form her committee again and do her own. Right.
And how does it work with elections, will you like a massive list of everything that's suggested change, or is that, do you wanna change the charter as much?
You know, all we'll do is, we'll basically have, you're changing a paragraph, and you kinda have to, you basically have to show the revised paragraph and get your name.
Does it each paragraph?
Each paragraph is a good.
I don't know if we'll be able to do everything we want to, but we'll figure out, sometimes you have, you have to make the change in the ordinance, and as you're actually going, a lot of things is pretty.
Yeah, you're gonna repeat it out.
You're gonna have a lot more, but.
But we'll have a plan forward.
We can always drop them in the mix.
Right, right, but as long as we know, you know, what changes we wanna make, take what we can, below any truth, and.
Yeah, yeah. One of the things we work at is the election, a part of it, because basically, we have the at-large.
Still says at-large, doesn't it?
Yeah, so that, we have a settlement of a lawsuit that changed how our, I would stop here, that I've never seen, to be honest with you. And we had a settlement of that lawsuit, basically in effect, we've been following this change, even though our charter doesn't say that. And, uh, and the only way you can change settlement to lawsuit is to refile the lawsuit, we opened it up. I would like to try to see if we can just change our charter back what we had before and see if that, I need to look into whether that would just basically, whereas it's a new charter provision, so to speak.
Yeah, you made sure of that large?
That's what it was.
Then you're gonna have a lumba, but.
No, it's not gonna change it back to an at-large. It says at-large, you want to figure it back to a district.
I don't.
You didn't remember district?
Right, right.
I'm not quite. I, I, I think we probably need to look at redistricting, part of it. That's okay. That's how you use it, but that's. I just think we, I think what we, what we have in our charter, we need to have that persistent, that's what I'm saying. Even if we keep it the same as it, as you're doing it now, we need to change our charter and reflect that. So I mean, that's. I want us to look at the election and figure out, I mean, our committee needs to figure out what we wanna do. Referendum to the council, put on ballot. At the end of the day, I want, hopefully, whatever we do is in our charter. So that way, citizens, twenty years from now, when I picked it up and he called me about, you know, how we're gonna handle elections, I read the charter.
The first thing I saw, when I started reading, I was like.
As far as citizens are about it. And if the citizens wanted it, why are we not following? That's because we had a lawsuit. And again, I understand that, but, um, and maybe we could look, you know, done it differently, but I'm not gonna second guess what happened, so, but, um, it is unusual, I believe, in that way. I mean, usually, I mean, if you change the constitution, I mean, basically what they said is our constitution is unconstitutional uh, as it applies to elections, so therefore we change it. And so we probably ought to re-look at it in part of this charter process and what, how we wanna do elections in the future and get it put back in our charter, how we do that. That's to me, mine, I, I, I think, nothing else, we need to get that clarified for future citizens.
All right, motion to, let's see, to appoint to the committee to review proposed changes and updates to charter. We're gonna allow Ms. Christie to read that. We're looking for five to ten citizens, businesses, men, women, uh, two council members. One forward. You have a motion to accept.
Two total.
Two total.
Two total council members, that's it.
That was, that was you, correct?
Yeah, four. Second.
Three.
Uh, favor say aye.
I'm not sure I understand, so what, what you just did.
We just accepted the fact that we're gonna move forward on the charter, appointing Ms. Christie to be leading it and we agreed to appoint five to ten people, two council members, men, women, law enforcement, businesses.
Well, why don't we go ahead and appoint two council members tonight?
Okay.
And then with the next meeting, come back with everybody come back. That's what we got, one.
I would care if you don't chamber deal, so I would say.
I think it needs to be Bob since he's been picking on Christie.
I'd say that's a good idea.
Jason, are you in there?
It's not to get to know, it's the charter.
I don't, I really don't. It doesn't matter, either one of us, I say Rick's got his hands full with this.
I would suggest Bob.
Uh, that's two votes for you, but I'm not out.
Do you get coin?
You make him mad for ten minutes a day, didn't he?
I would do that if you were short of good and a prayer before God.
Oh, Bob, hello, Bob.
Wait a minute, Jason, that's not nice, Bob, pray for me. But, because I have to bother Christie, he's just been elected there two years.
Keep it up, it'll be a little longer. I think what he's saying is, yeah, if, if we intend to put this on next year's ballot, y'all will be busy.
That's true. And that's the downside to it is, is that obviously sometimes charter election can be controversial and not help you with your election efforts. Unfortunately, the downside to it.
Pat, do, in your city experience, does everybody have two-year terms?
No, it just depends on against what your.
No, what's that?
What your charter, well, it depends on the city, art and ground is four years.
Well, you know, two years, that's around real quick.
Yeah, that's one of the things I look at, because.
You know, we're campaigning, you know, two.
Two years is too short. For a new council person, it starts, basically you just figure out what's going on.
I still don't know what's going on, I'm just three years. Really, I mean, when we campaign here, it's a month, so.
So, you know, it's playing term limits, um, you know, I, I know people are either passionate about it or not, but and Brownell, when I got there, we had four councilmen that had been there twenty-five years plus, later than their thirty years. And the continuity, you would be shocked at how much you can get. I mean, if you change the directions every two or three years, you can't ever go in a direction. And, uh, or something to be said, if voters vote them back in, that means they're doing a good job, right? But if they don't, if they vote back in, I mean, they don't change. And so I, I've always been.
Sure, boiers did it.
I would, I've always been a pro, because the charter, people run council very well and it's a thankless job. You don't get paid or anything. You, you spend a lot of your own time, it's very stressful and, uh, you take a lot of pressure, a lot of heat. Your business person, your business takes some heat, um, it's, it's a tough job. And, uh, to me, uh, the terms, I mean, I, I would look at longer terms as part of our charter review process. I do, I do this. I, I've been doing this twenty years and I have seen cities that have, I've represented several cities, they're general law cities and they're two-year terms. Um, we don't think do that, unless it becomes a rule city, but y'all can, y'all control. You, you get to decide how your government is run and.
As opposed to general law?
So you get to decide on terms, term limits, how they elect, how they're elected, and that's the kind of stuff we need to look at and see.
All right, so we're in agreement with Christie and Bob on that committee.
I think it's fine.
Any other?
Sometimes maybe you'll come back to it.
So then, now, if something was a special need, that'd be me, right? It's gonna be a special need for a councilman. And well, I said, I'm not, I mean, it's really.
I'd love to review, I'd love to review Jason's stuff yourself.
All right, let's move forward. City council may consider discussing taking action to put notice in the local newspaper to advertise forbid the survey the airport land. This is basically trying to separate the agriculture from the airport in order to reduce the taxes, correct?
Well, what we wanna do is, is we're applying for a Texas Aviation Grant. And in this grant, there's two of them. Uh, the first one, they, Texas, the state of Texas will pay for fifty percent of any maintenance that we do out there. So if we change a light bulb, they pay for half of it. If, uh,
Repaying or?
Yeah, if, if we mow, they'll pay for half of it, you know, and so, uh, which is a coup in itself right there, just mowing. As it stands right now, if we were entering this agreement tomorrow, uh, our plaque shows we have a section of land, six hundred and forty acres. And that's on record as our airport. Now, in, in, in the, in the grant itself, in the final print, if you, if you enter into the grant, then all the money you make on the airport will need to be rolled back into maintenance program for the airport. Currently, we, we lease out agricultural property, uh, and we put that money in our channel fund. And we don't wanna. Yeah, yeah, we don't want to roll it back into the airport.
So we need a survey.
Right, but at the same time, in, in, in some of the future improvements we'd like to make at the airport is, we'd like to build a game fence to keep deer off the runway or barns or animals. Uh, at the same time, when they're doing that survey, they can go ahead and draw the stakes for a fence in the future. So it's kind of double, you know, we're pitting two birds with one stone, but this would free us up. We would then take that plaque, give it to Texas Aviation, say this is our airport and we're gonna proceed with this. The other grant that we are looking at is they'll pay for any major improvement, for instance, rooftop and the runway, uh,
Adding on the hangers.
Adding on, adding new airplane hangers. They'll pay ninety percent, we'd pay ten, so, which is substantial. And, and we have a waiting list right now of fifteen people, uh, that would, one, one in, in, in an airplane here. So I'm sure someone faded away, but, you know, we could probably still get ten of those. So, uh, that's something we're looking at getting into and then getting Texas Aviation to help us. But I need to, we wanna do it proper, you know, so that's why we need the survey.
All right.
About three thousand dollars.
How much?
Three thousand dollars.
Three?
Three thousand. Three whole thousand. Now, it's, it's gotta go out to bid, so it should be in the paper this coming newspaper. Uh, but it's technically, because it's a professional service, we don't base the whole, uh, the, the.
It's not competitive, is it?
Right, right. It's not, it's not based on, on, on the amount, it's based on who's the best service provider for the professional services. But, uh, we, we sent out preliminary, uh, requests for, for quotes and, uh, the pricing range from six thousand to three thousand, with three thousand being lowest, so, uh, but again, that's preliminary and we tell them upfront, so their prices may change when they bring in actual bids.
Any other questions? All right, motion to put the notice in legal, local newspaper to advertise forbid the survey the airport land.
So good.
Second. All favors say aye. All right, city council may consider discussing taking action to put notice in the local newspaper again to advertise forbid to hire a collection firm for water bill and municipal court fines and fees. On the same line, right?
Yes, uh, again, it's professional services, um, but when you're looking at collection agencies, it's a little different. Uh, a lot of them connect, well, if you give them accounts to go collect, uh, they, they will add their fee onto that collected amount on some. Others will, will, they'll charge a percentage of what they have collected.
That's what I've been there, tax attorney.
Yes.
It's the same process.
Right, so we have two different types. You have municipal funds and then you have our, uh, accounts. Municipal accounts would be if someone got a fine for, uh, what, a class C in Mississippi, right? Or, or, or below, everything else would be different. But what we're trying to collect on is the class C down. So if someone was, got a ticket speeding in Ballinger and they lived in Mississippi, okay, uh, we may have an account that's four years old and we can't, no, let me back it up. Currently, if, if, if it goes past sixty days, we, we put it in a, a national, a statewide system called Omni. And Omni, uh, is attached to your driver's license. So if you have a ticket and it goes into Omni, then you will not be able to renew your driver's licenses until that ticket is paid or that fine is got. So, uh, but it might take six years. So for instance, if Sam renews his driver's license and a week later gets a traffic fine and it goes past the sixty days and goes into Omni, it may be five and a half years before he goes to renew his driver's license. And that, that's the only federal safe that we kinda have, is, is the last safety net. Some, some cities issue warrants and, and we can issue warrants. However, in a case of someone living in Austin or San Antonio or Mississippi, uh, we're not gonna ask our police force to go get somebody for a two hundred and fifty dollar fine. So we have built up some, some accounts that have, uh, we have a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars that in, uh, in our accounts, just people, I guess, get all of that.
Did they do that?
Yes.
But if they get pulled over in their hometown.
Unless you issue the warrants.
And if we have a warrant and they get pulled over, then they go to jail to pay it or whatever.
What happens is they go, say, in, in Fort Worth. If you're in Fort Worth and you get pulled over and you live in Fort Worth, and if you have a warrant, okay, they will take you to Tarrant County Jail, I guess is where they take you. It's our responsibility to go pick that person up. They don't necessarily have to pay that in Tarrant County. They may choose to just sit it out in jail, which would mean our police have to go get them, bring them back here and send them out here.
So how much money do they put utility?
Hundred and twenty-five thousand. Now, some of that's old, four years.
So do, do our, do they put tax attorney in a query in the self of brag, do they do this?
As far as I know, we have no, nobody to go collect our accounts.
No. Do they do this, what you're talking about?
They offer this service.
They've done a wonderful job of delivering tax and I really like it.
Well, we will treat them a bit.
I understand.
Yeah, no, we can send it to them and let them send what they would like. Now, on the municipal accounts, uh, typically it doesn't, it's a, it's a no cost at all contract. Where, and, and what they do is add, say, thirty dollars onto a fine, so it's two hundred and fifty. Now that they're going to collect it, it'll be two hundred and eighty. So it's actually no cost to us at all. Okay, on the utility side, uh, it'll be a percentage.
Any other questions?
Uh, Stan was that correct and all that? Police business?
Yeah, for the most part, I mean, we can, a lot of the process is, you know, for our tickets, they have four days to contact the courts. Normally within thirty days, they'll contact the courts, we send them a letter of mail. Normally they respond to it, sometimes they don't. And then, you know, then they go to Omni.
Right.
So, and, you know, it just depends on the day you go to the driver's license. I mean, you can say if you live in Fort Worth, you get pulled over here, we give you a ticket, you go into Omni, you get pulled over in Fort Worth, they'll say that your driver's license was suspended because of this.
Right.
And a lot of times they say, okay, well, Omni contacts, they contact us, they pay it with the phone, all of a sudden that.
Yeah, I think a lot of it depends on the person, how they handle their business.
It's a little different, I mean, a lot of people, especially out, not in the state of Texas, that is shot and clear, but now forget about it, because technically we can't touch that. How do you pay the driver's license? I mean, it's an arm and leg, there's, not an arm and leg, but it's a lot of paperwork to file on that state's driver's license. I mean, so.
Well, having a collection agent is, one is another finding, uh, on the utility side. And since we're going after a collection agent anyway, we're gonna put in our municipal fines and, uh, see if we can expedite some of that.
Good idea.
Just good business.
Right. Motion to put notice in the local newspaper to advertise forbid to hire a collection firm for water bill and municipal court fines and fees. Second.
Three.
All favors say aye. Right, consider all matters incident related to the issuance and sale of City of Ballinger, Texas Tax and Water Works and Sewer Systems Surplus Revenue Certificate of Obligation Series two thousand and eighteen, including adoption of an ordinance authorized in the issuance of such certificates of obligation. For those who just really don't understand all that, that has to do with the water development board. Going forward with the water, correct?
Yes. Uh, this is our bond. We're going to issue a bond for our work with our water development. We're going to issue a bond for our work with our Water Development Board. Uh, basically, the, the design and the negotiation of easements from the north, Abilene Water Plant to South Avenue Water Plant. This is just the design. This is what we've been trying to negotiate with our different contracts, with CRND, the National Treasury Dual, the City of Addison. And we have both our contracts now signed with, uh, Abilene and Treasury Dual. So, uh, this will be issuing the bond, uh, to pay for the design.
And so, what, one day, and thirty thousand dollars?
Yes.
That's included in the total project, it's not outside of the...
This is the fact and development, the section that we agreed to.
Right, right.
And that's the forgiveness. So it's actually like three point three, but that's the payment, because it's a loan forgiveness, so we've got to reduce that.
But that's the next line.
Forgiveness to...
Yeah. So it drops it down to that one point.
I think that's the same, five hundred and nine, is the forgiveness part.
Any questions? All right. Motion to accept the issuance of the sale of City of Ballenger, Texas Tax and Water Works and Sewer Systems Surplus Revenue Certificates of Obligation Series 2018, including the adoption of ordinance authorized in issuance of such certificates of obligation. That was a motion. Second? So, all in favor, say aye. Y'all want to sleep, because that'd be a... All right. Consider all matters incident related to approving and authorizing the execution of principal forgiveness agreement with the Texas Water Development Board and related escrow agreement, including adoption of a resolution pertaining thereto. And as probably said, this is the forgiveness of the bond, which is really important.
Yes.
Basically reducing it from the three point two, three point three guys, one or less.
Right.
Everybody's going to talk about that one. All right. Motion to approve and authorize the execution of a principal forgiveness agreement with the Texas Water Development Board and related escrow agreement, including the adoption of a resolution pertaining thereto. Uh, second? All in favor, say aye. All right. City council may consider, discuss, or take action to approve the amended travel expense voucher forms for employees traveling on city business. You should have three pages. Concerning this.
Basically, we're just updating it, the form, they, they were paying ten dollars per meal, breakfast, lunch, dinner. And, uh, we, we raised it to, adjusted it to forty dollars a day for meals. Uh, and I don't think that a lot of our people were following these guidelines, but, uh, so we're going to reissue the updated. And had them, I, I just, for instance, uh, we had a, one of our water guys went up to a class, get his water license, and, uh, just, you know, started giving us bills, say, hey, we went to a water class, you know, a little advanced notice is good, you know? And that's what this form's supposed to provide, and kind of give us a breakdown of kind of what you're using it for. And, uh, so, just don't want somebody popping up with a five hundred dollar hotel bill, saying, oh, hey, we, we went, you know...
So, this is pre-offeration travel, is that one of them?
Yes.
We need to go, pick a license.
Right.
About what it's going to run during.
That's a good practice, we do that much.
Yeah. That way, they don't pop up with a bunch of bills, you didn't notice coming around.
That would get the law.
You have any question?
When you say forty dollars allowance, what do you mean by that?
Well, we'll pay up to forty dollars a day. If somebody wants to go to Papa Do's and spend, you know, a hundred and fifty dollars on a meal, we'll pay up to forty dollars a day, pretty quick.
So if they want to spend twenty, they're going to get a first twenty bucks.
You have to steal them, or you get four hundred dollars. No, no, spend twenty, spend twenty, yeah. If you spend a hundred and twenty, I get forty, so you're full.
We talked about forty dollars per day.
Per day.
And for their two days, that's six meals, thanks.
Forty dollars a day. A day.
Three meals, forty dollars for three meals.
Sure.
The next day, forty dollars for three more.
Right. So two days, we get eighty dollars.
Forty dollars per day, that comes like three meals, anything over there, that's it, out of their pocket.
Or maybe five times. If they were eating like...
I'd be very curious.
Right. Right.
Well, that's science, I mean, we understand the allowance, and we want to make it for deals, I want to make a deal allowance, so you...
Right, right.
That's forty, seventy, fifty, sixty, I'm asking.
My, my, we were the governments, we were for dealing, based on the area.
Okay.
Different cities had different deal rates.
Right.
So we went by the government schedule on the deal rates.
Okay.
Now, my other company, I think they gave us more, we were a bigger company.
Well, it was a lot of... We looked at going for Dino. Just, you know, if someone goes to Love, we give them, you know, but you're going to have to go find a rate for Love, you know?
It's pretty easy.
One, I understand, but...
The problem comes is, you go to Dallas, this side of ours is seventy-five dollars, this side is fifty dollars.
Yeah.
So they can pick the hotel.
Right.
It's on the seventy-five dollar sideline.
Yeah. But...
But that was the only one that was available, you didn't get it.
But McDonald's is pretty standard everywhere.
That's right.
So...
Even Hong Kong?
Yep, exactly. So, you know?
I just, I think forty dollars covered pretty much everywhere. I mean, hotels have free breaks.
Right.
Take a man to that, just for that forty dollar meal, lunch is usually seventy-eight bucks.
Right.
Forty, forty.
Any help?
I do, I do have one question, because there's times where we have to make an emergency trip out of town for hot dogs. There ain't going to be a three-day approval. So, does that affect us any? I mean, we look, forty dollars a day, that's fine, I'll find Danny, but why would suggestion tell him not to die?
Yeah. Three days goes on the desk, yeah.
No, a lot of times, you know...
I think there needs to be acceptance.
Of course.
So the notification is done, a lot of times, we're within the hour, or we're on the road to the hot dog.
Well, this is sort of a go-by, kind of standard, you know, it's not...
So I'm not going to need any, because I have to take, you know, two officers to go transport, transport body.
No.
Okay, that's all I need to do.
All right. Motion to approve the amended travel expense vouchers for employees traveling on city business.
Please move it.
Second? All in favor, say aye. All right. Consider approval of building permits. Wait up, wait up. Is there only one, or do you have some others?
Taylor wants to get four, seven, six, no, no, a chair, and three.
Four in the class.
I bet he really wants to do this.
I like the reason.
Now, I have one coming today, uh, David Jackie Hallmark. Uh, they want to build a store, building twelve by thirty-two by eight foot. That thing that goes to the...
All right. Any questions? Motion to accept building permits as presented, please. Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All right. All right, here's my activity number report from Chief Stanley Marish.
All right, for November, we had dinner rest, low magnets, thirty-one, thirty-one calls first. Uh, it's not eight hundred citations, eighty citations issued, but a little over fifty-eight hundred dollars in court fines. Um, we did have one incident with the Christmas parade, we had one person from Florida drive around in cop cars. So, we got a hefty ticket. And, um, we had a fleet accident where my officer was behind another vehicle in a turn lane on South Seven and Hutchins. And they came with it, were going to turn towards them, the little lady freaked out, put her in a brick. No damage was done to either vehicle. GPS was called, they said they weren't going to do an accident, because there's no damage, no citations were issued. Uh, post accident, drug test, non-armed officer, everything was in the... I'm not a good... Any questions?
One, Chris?
Um, assistant called me, you may have already heard about it, but she drives a bus and drops kids off on Hutchins in front of Rough Country.
Yes.
Why did an officer...
We, we did not know, um, that, I don't know if it was paying her off or... Which one was it?
Ah...
She's paying her off.
It's paying her off.
We did not know that they dropped off on Hutchins. Uh, we know that Ballenger does, and a lot of times, we tend to follow the Ballenger bus. But with us not knowing, we did not know that, but we haven't been staying up on that. Been staying out there a little bit longer for that.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? All right. All right, here's a city master's private report.
Oh, let's see. Is that one on? Uh, the monitor, oh, it's off. Uh, I'll start here. Okay. Uh, somebody here may have noticed a three percent increase in the water bill. And, uh, anyway, we, we had some calls about it, and, uh, I wanted to explain what that is. Is we have a, a contract with Republic for our, uh, waste pickup. And in this contract, there's a negotiated three percent, or it had been negotiated in the contract, a three percent increase yearly for, uh, fuel and, you know, just basic, uh, cost of living increase, you know, for the, for Republic. So, you may notice a three percent increase on your water bill, and that's what it is, is, uh, the, uh, the water bill, I mean, the trash inflation. Yeah. Uh, update on city finances. Uh, is it under whoever's CDs? Yes. I'm going to push that one down, I'm going to do air mid. Uh, in the last city council meeting, uh, it was, uh, raised that Air Mid had sent out letters to, uh, our customers that, uh, their service had been canceled. And, uh, we, we looked into it, and basically, what happened? In, in their, in their system, uh, we will send checks, oh, well, we stay a month behind, because what we do is, we collect our, on the water bill, okay? And so we'll collect the money that was delegated or relegated to, uh, Air Mid and also the cemetery, but, uh, so we're continually running a month behind, because we'll take our money and then send it to Air Mid. Okay? Uh, a payment had been missed in June. And instead of taking the July payment and applying it to June, it just hung out. So when we sent the July payment, okay, it covered July, but June was still outstanding. Uh, we made the August payment, and then September, uh, was skipped. And so, and, and again, instead of paying the, the last bill going forward, uh, they just let it skip. But they didn't notify us that they had not received these, these checks. Uh, so, if you have two months that are outstanding, and then you're thirty days behind, you hit ninety days. And at that point, it automatically kicks out a letter. So, uh, we rectified the June payment and the September payment. And in their system, now, they will notify us when we start getting close to sixty days in the years. So, that way, we won't ever have this problem.
But that's consecutive sixty days, or is it...
No, it sounds like any...
Any sixty days.
So, did, did you also fix the process that caused the, you know, the missing purpose?
Yes. And, and, and there's also, uh, because in the last meeting, Bob had also mentioned the cemetery fund. Uh, and, and he came and talked to me, and, uh, we paid him, uh, the last check. Should have caught us up till November. So, we're completely caught up on the cemetery fund. And if we issue these monthly...
What is the cemetery money?
Well, what we take is, people can donate money. A couple of years ago, apparently, the Evergreen Cemetery outside of town ran out of maintenance, so cash. They had a couple CDs, but they don't want to dip into that, because that's for professional care. The CDs being a point five percent, uh, in interest, it wasn't covering the cost of maintenance. So, there was a, a proposal, somebody came to council and asked for, um, the water bill, uh, donation of a dollar. Now, people that don't want to donate, they're thinking, oh, all that, oh, it doesn't cover anybody over sixty-five, I believe.
That's wrong.
Okay? And so, it covers people over sixty-five.
Right here in the minute.
Okay.
David Carrick, Rick Sonnenberg met the council, requested a volunteer donation be put on the water bill this month, and it had to be the cost of nineteen year Evergreen Cemetery. Remember, people making donations are reducing each year, and they're not receiving enough revenue to have to pay for a first, to keep the grounds. They have CDs, blah, 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 that only can spend the interest term. After discussion, Commissioner Governor Kelly made a motion to approve the request about the cemetery association, add one talk to the volunteer donation, nothing about sixty-five.
Okay. I'm not sure at what point that was decided. Uh, that was what Sonnenberg told me, that, that, uh, somebody, if, if you're over sixty-five. My question was, how do they know? Because I don't know that you're over sixty-five.
Sonnenberg told me, he never knew of a sixty-five.
Right. Well, it, it's kind of a shame hearing, but what it boils down to is that, I don't know how it got on there, but it's there, and it's roughly six hundred dollars a month. And, uh, and it, apparently, it doesn't cover businesses that serve people over sixty-five, is what I've been told. And, uh...
You say it doesn't cover them?
No, no.
You don't get to volunteer if you're sixty-five?
No, you get to volunteer, but it's, they don't, they don't apply it.
Oh, no.
Right. So, what they did, they applied it across the board, and I, I don't know that...
Because I've been opted out.
Right.
Oh, yes.
But you're only six hundred dollars a month, but that is...
Volunteer, but you're automatically enrolled, and you just opt out if you don't.
Yep.
How do you know? He said, but you're... So, how do you know that?
But, but, so, if, if it's, if it's put on the bill, and then you have to opt out, and thirty-two hundred people opt out, doing, I mean, how many? Roughly, roughly twenty-two hundred meters, right? And that includes commercial meters. So, if you take away all the commercial, and then supposedly, if, if people over sixty-five didn't take it off.
Right.
Maybe they did, maybe they weren't. And what happens when you turn sixty-five next year, and you're paying for it, and then, you know? And I don't know how, why, why they advertise it was either, so I don't know that people, everybody knows this to it.
Well, the only way, it's these times I feel like some workers, and everybody was opted in, and you had to opt out.
And we've had a lot of people opt out.
I don't even know.
It's voluntary, you think you just have a little check on you.
Is it like when you sign up for your water bill, that you, you know, when you connect your new service or something, or is it like on, on that?
Well, but not everybody's going to have new service. Some people got service for...
The judge's motion's three years ago. Three years ago. But a lot of times, change, they only re-go them, everybody reinstated.
Well, I guess a question, I have an idea, what has happened to Braden's and Full Front Palace? The mispayments, mispaying the cemetery?
We, we are current, as far as I know.
As, up this...
Right, we, we've, we've given him any's current. And, and he took that, and was going to go and see, check his books, and... And, and he took that and was gonna go and see, check his books and, and if something was different, he was gonna come back. Now.
Need to be informed.
Problem is, apparently, when Bob was looking or talking to Sonnenberg about it, uh, anyhow, I don't know if it was last year or a year before, at some point, see what we do on the check stuff, we'll break it out, July payment, uh, August payment, you know, September, when we were both on month and the three and four payments all at one time. Okay, so you'd go three, four months and then get a check for three thousand dollars, okay? And sometimes it wasn't broken out, so he was at roughly guessing six hundred fifty dollars a month. Because that's pretty much what, what we were looking at. His, historical. Okay, so he has given him his funds, letting him go check his books. We think we're accurate, okay? We think we're caught it. So if there's any discrepancy in his representation, you cannot just know.
So same question, did you also fix the procedure, make sure we don't miss any more?
Yes, I'll take payments. And also too, I talked to him about sending us a, an invoice. Now granted, this is a, a donation about citizens, okay? But if he could send a, a rough invoice of six hundred dollars a month, that way he knows, okay, we got invoice number X, Y, Z, you know, and, and if it's five hundred and fifty dollars, it's five hundred and fifty dollars, you know, adjust his.
Assist his.
Right. So that way, that's your kind of check and balance. He's, he's got an invoice that he's producing. We can pay it, put it in our books, right? And say, okay, yes, we paid this because here's, you know, against invoice number X, Y, Z.
How's he gonna know what the invoice for if he doesn't know where to collect?
Doesn't matter if you, if he charges us five hundred a month, okay? It can be five hundred, it could be sixty, anything. See what I'm saying? It's a paper trail just to make sure that he's there.
It's a paper.
It does the basic, actually, right, he's.
Is that not some kind of system that we keep up with an R? Bills rather than giving one more?
We have an, we have a system, okay? And, and.
But it's not being paid every month?
Well, no, it's not, but that doesn't mean it's being paid incorrectly, right?
Right.
Now, it, but this will be a way to, to, to double check. If he has an invoice number, instead of saying, okay, we, we're just angelized payment, we're saying, okay, we're paying against invoice number X, Y, Z. Right, right. That, I mean, we can, we can tie it into an invoice. He's got a copy, we've got a copy, you know, and they match. That way when you go do the accounting, you're not just guessing, well, maybe it's five hundred this month or three hundred this month on his end, right? You know, because that will pay against the server invoice. So he's, he's basically creating a dummy invoice to send to us because he's not technically providing a service to the city of Ballenger, he's just seeking his donation funds that prearranged.
Well, he can't, he's paid every month.
He can't, and, and him creating this invoice there or not, will ensure that he gets paid every month because his last check received was an eight. Right.
And that was for one, two, three, four, five, six months.
Right.
Yeah, he was paying it just last year.
Yeah, well, on our end, okay, there was no, there was no talk of, of monthly payments when, in inception. So it's easier for us just to get one check every six months. Okay? However, if there's some sort of question, you know, whether it's been paid, when you start looking back, if we have this paper trail and it's monthly, that way we ensure that we know they're getting paid every month. And, and on his end as well, he's able to forecast his, his, his budget. If he knows he's getting paid every month versus every six months, he can pay his, his, his.
Is it best to pay every month or is it best to pay him every six months? Is there an advantage to one or the other?
Well, if we pay it every month, we know we mess them up. If you pay it every six months, you know, there is a possibility, if there's no paper trail, that we're just relying on our books and, and, you know, but if you have this invoice system, you know, you're gonna get hit with an invoice, so you know you gotta pay it. Our city accounts receivable. Okay? And it can be a dummy invoice. It's just, it, it just creates a paper trail on his end where he can say, this hasn't been paid. You know?
Those are these for the three months.
Yes, yes, yes. But again, we can start every month. We'll get an invoice system together, that way he can.
And that way they can have a more realistic budget.
Right, right.
So he's, he's ended on invoice or pop, I don't know, correct, three hundred. How much you pay?
And he's gonna have to adjust his invoice.
He's not, he's calling an invoice?
He can call it anything you want.
I don't know.
Yeah, those, yeah, yeah, uh.
The invoice sounds kinda like.
He can call her a request for funds.
I think that would be better.
Why would she even do that? Why couldn't you just? Pay your January first, all money second, December, July, and show on January first?
Since we're asking for extra work.
If historically you're getting six hundred fifty dollars a month for six months, and then you have a month where you get only three fifty. Okay? You're gonna come to a consensus, okay? If this is a monthly thing and we get it six hundred fifty dollars a month and we get three hundred fifty now, you know, but if it's bolted up at one payment, okay, how are you gonna break that out?
So how, how would you say, I'm waiting, I mean, that's like whatever you collect you want.
Right.
Because you're gonna have people opt out, you're gonna have people moving.
Right.
And so a request for funds would be.
Right. A request for funds terminology wise would be, would be better. I agree.
On the monthly bet.
Correct.
That way you do, that'd be better, correct?
Right. Let's see, it triggers, if you get a request for funds, it triggers in our system a need, right? And, and that way, if Anita retires tomorrow, just walks out and throws a paper up in the air, we know there's a system, he's gonna send a request for funds, right? So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is this about resolutionally, that was the procedure doing that?
Which one?
This. It's not resolutionally, it wasn't motion by the city council. I was just thinking about what Bob said, that she might be trying to come back in and present, you know, getting really off the resolution decision, you know. You have the option in each bill, that's why it doesn't round, they have a verification fund, and it just says, do you want to donate one dollar to the verification fund? Yeah, yes, you add to your bill, so if your bill was twenty-nine dollars, you pay thirty, and that one dollar goes to the verification fund, you collect it and.
Can I agree with that? Because I'm not sure that, that I would agree with a mandatory blanket and you have to opt out.
Is that what it is? Is it on the actual bill, checking?
Not to be held on.
Uh, it is included in the bill automatically. Okay, I understand.
And unless you know. And unless you know about it, you have to opt out.
Right.
So if you don't know, and you probably don't.
We'll get some phone calls tomorrow.
If it's not, right, we don't get six hundred dollars in ground with verification at all, we give like two hundred or three hundred. Much like that is how much all people are not realized.
See, in, in my opinion, this was a forced tax.
Yeah. That's what I would agree.
So I would agree that somebody needs to come back in from Evergreen Cemetery to, to reissue or let us look at this again.
Might, might be more money.
Or just who you know.
Right, right.
Whatever you learn.
But either way, I mean, you know, the city's going to do something, either we can maintain it or. So, I mean, that, I think that's what it came down to last time. But. So is that something they want to put on the agenda next week or next? To, to.
I don't mind being a dog.
To revisit that? Well, yeah, some people, some people wouldn't.
I'm not gonna use one out there.
Well, and, and actually, you're not looking, wanna pay more.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, if some people have them, people out there, then they may want to see.
Well, I say instead of us deciding, building, doing it, Rick, maybe Rob, you can get back to Rick, let them talk amongst themselves first, become just some of us that we.
Yeah.
He did that, I don't know. Well, the thing is, and at this point, are we gonna want, in the next meeting, to say, either they're gonna need to come back and talk to us or we're just gonna stop it altogether?
No.
Well, I mean, we, we need to get them in, and if we're gonna redo it, then we need to get them to do it.
I agree with that, and they, they get more money or less money.
Well, and I understand, but we gotta come to them a deadline.
And at the same time, they don't promise us as to when they're gonna get their money.
We can promise them. They're not gonna get to the limit of that. Yeah.
Sometimes you don't have to put this notice to come in and do this, I mean, instead we're gonna do this, you don't have to let the people know they have the opportunity to come in here and all that.
Right.
So that means you're gonna post.
You can, but that is a legacy on the water bill, you can't. Yes, yes. So we're gonna let them opt in and opt out.
I agree, that's a good process.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, we'll, we'll work it out. Okay, what else? Nice. Uh, okay, air med. Someone's trying to call him.
Put on air med real quick.
Uh, just, uh, in, in the air med system, you pay monthly, okay? We, we obviously work them off time because we send our bills out and at either that month, the, the funds come in and we, uh, pay air med. So we're already thirty days behind, okay? We did, uh, miss a payment in June. Now, instead of, when we sent the July payment, instead of paying for June and then in the rear of July, they skipped you. And so we made the July payment. Also, they give us a ninety day grace. So, but we're already thirty days behind, so that means we only really have sixty days. So we missed the payment in June and nobody let us know. Okay, we should have known, but we didn't. So, uh, so we have, we paid July, we paid August. In September, uh, we paid the September, October, uh, at the same time we bolted up that payment. And because we were out September and we weren't paying until the end of October, that threw us in past our ninety days, which in their system, after ninety days, you go inactive and which triggers the letter that was sent out to everybody. We've, we've, we've remedied that, we've corrected everything. They are paid up to date, everybody in Ballenger is covered, sometimes even like double coverage because some people went and paid on their own. So actually they have more credit in their system, so. Uh, and we can give them credit on their water bill if that's what they want to do. I know some people went and paid, waited sixty-five for the year. They just went in and paid for it. So, uh, and then they call us and we give them credit on the bill. So, but it is, it is worked out and, you know, we've got a system in place where we can.
As of today, they're waiting for two checks, total of nine hundred dollars. As of today?
Yes, correct. And that.
And those checks are in the mail.
To use the old adage, yeah, the checks are in the mail quite early, yes. Yes, but, but we are up to date, we are within our ninety day grace period.
Can I ask, why do we do, why are we headed for citizens inside the, why can't citizens just sign up for themselves?
I do not know. I don't know why.
We have, we are employees that can make a career, or have hospital attend to us, says, here's what, you know, and our employees get to do with their patient.
Right.
And so it's something we control, well, it's something we control.
Right.
Um, but the citizens, um.
I suppose they just decided to provide this as a service to the community if they wanted to.
Well, that's what we did too, and our service is advertising, and we put it out there and then you sign up and they have thirty-five dollars a year, same.
Right.
At all.
Right.
It's not scary, it's a similar service, but we have the angle of paying like that.
Right.
I don't know, it just seems like it's a, I mean, I have them paid for us to somehow not pay a payment or something or, or miss a payment for one, I mean, I don't know how it works exactly, but how many people we have signing up for it?
We don't have that number.
Hundred and three?
Yeah.
Hundred and three, hundred and five, that's right.
Non-employees.
Right.
Awesome, good for the vote this camp, I'm not surprised. It is a vote this camp for?
Sixty-five dollars we think over there.
Okay, there you go. So gentlemen, the last time I wrote up since all this said, I mean, that's, that was last meeting, and we went into a grace period. We came out of that grace period, nobody being covered. I hate to ask you a what if question. What if these citizens who thought they were covered had to use air med?
In their.
Thirty or four thousand dollars bill.
Right.
Who would eat that? You see? Right. So that's not really important, we pay every month, huh?
You pay liability on by even taking.
I agree with that.
Care of it.
We not prepay your rate, so we file it that way? I guess you may not know we groupship is a change. That's true.
And I can tell you from experience, that's a fifty-nine thousand dollar bill.
Do what?
That's what I can tell you from experience, it's a fifty-nine thousand dollar bill.
Really? I, I personally don't know that I would want that responsibility, the liability as a city to provide that for our citizens.
I wish we could, I appreciate you for that.
I guess, I mean, it's more worse for us to keep up with it, while it's for them, and it's a big liability.
That's the point, I mean, I, I would hate it.
Keep it simple.
I mean, just tell them we don't want our citizens to get the fifty-five dollars discount, but they just didn't.
Build a rig.
Long should say, or is it just a citizen's voucher?
I suppose I don't know if anybody can opt in, if you could opt in.
Well, I'm saying, I mean, it's, it's.
I know why, so I guess it would be.
I have all that city why. Well, I, I said, I, to me, citizens ought to opt in, but it obviously, you know, if you wanna pay it, you pay it, so here's the company.
Directly. Anything that's bolt discount.
Yeah.
Under our umbrella, but directly to the customer, so I'm just kidding.
And that takes us out of, if they were somehow just screw up a lot of companies that didn't apply, and who do you think they're gonna come to?
Well, and then, and the way they're seen in their system, in air med's system, okay, they said they, they should have notified us when we were getting sixty days, right? Okay, and they didn't. Now, that little check or box or whatever in their system is turned on now, but how do we know if somebody next week then turned it off again?
Right.
Okay, and we slip again, okay? Through our own fault or theirs, okay? We're liable for anything. And, and honestly, when, in that period after the meeting and before we get into it, I worried a lot. I heard they were, you know, every time I, I hear about somebody having to go to a hospital, uh, I worried a lot because that could be a pretty hefty bill for an airplane.
So how do we?
How do we migrate out of this? I don't know.
Have to need to contact them and see if they have any new processes and procedures they do because they were the ones that came to us.
Right.
And influence that, so I'd have to contact them and say, what are you doing now? Is there something still going on?
There's a little rig.
Change. Yeah.
With their fault.
Maybe for our employees, and we're continuing the same way.
Right.
For citizens, you just tell them, you know, we're gonna give literature out, have for the citizens, but our citizens are being direct. And, you know, we expect you to honor the same.
I would imagine a lot that we're gonna continue, have already contacted them, either done themselves or, uh, you know, swapped over, uh.
It's a small percentage, a hundred feet up without.
Right, right.
Well, Tom will agree with me.
Yes, sir.
When, uh, when that was done, there was an Airmade rep came to, uh, county meeting, and he put the proposal to the council, and he was like, I would imagine all we had to do was contact them, and have explained to them what we're looking at, and have, if they can reconsider, or.
Like I said, if they have any policy or procedure, how compared to they have them.
And then that change.
Yeah, one time the city paid that part of the employees.
Correct, they still do.
Which was a way to take in order, you know, that was part of their business.
Right, well, and, and I still wanna continue that for the employee, the city employees, and I'd much rather pay the sixty-five than the fifty-five, and not have to worry about, you know, the rest of our citizens if, if someone had.
When I retired, I took my own.
Yeah.
So are the fits, the city officials or the city employees affected part of the sixty day?
Yes.
Because you have, we do have one that was airbought to Austin to have plans.
Right, however, that was, when she went to the doctor, because that worried me. Uh, she went to the doctor and they chose to medevac her. Okay, that should be covered under our regular medical, her, through our T M L bill.
I don't know if she, no, I don't know if her pregnancy was under that, or her husband's.
My question.
So, I don't know.
I'll find out if it's.
Oh, and that's, that's so good.
Yeah, that's kind of.
Is Airmade, that's not.
I don't know.
I can believe the vote.
Actually, same, same.
So same area, I can see if you could.
Probably even check on Airmade and just see about policy and procedure if they changed it in that, compared to what it was back when we started.
So that's my great.
Yeah, so we see what's optioned.
Well, obviously, see.
Yeah, I just know.
But, like I also, on the flip side, it doesn't. All right, we'll look at it. We gotta hold over and see what we can do about that. Yeah. Uh, we had a report, a report. The I T for services for the city. Uh, this was a, a proposal raised by Jason, I don't wanna say a proposal. He wanted us to, yeah, he wanted us to look into getting citywide Wi-Fi. So, uh, we had Cory go out to three or four companies to see if they could come up with a plan to, to, to get the citywide Wi-Fi. Okay, and, uh, anyway, so they came in, they did kind of an audit of, you know, material that would be needed, uh, equipment. And, uh, this is the first quote that came in, and we're just kinda letting everybody know what we were looking at. We, we still have the other two proposals that need to come in, uh, but this'll be something that we review.
They just had to communicate with them. This is a little background, this is a network called our city offices together. So, yeah, it's a citywide network for offices.
Okay.
Um, to, to, in my mind, is a cost where we could eliminate phone systems at every office, and have a home system here, five homes, everybody uses the same network connection. They disable this D S L each, met to each site. There's a large upfront cost, but the savings would be pretty substantial, significant over time. Uh, in my mind, I mean, like I said, we're looking at the first did here, had no budget to the cost, these are wires. So these would be radio towers, planted on top of the earth building, shoot back to the main tower as a hub. Frontier is different, because they can say a fiber optic network here in town, they may able to wire each building directly, which would be a better option, but this, if they came in and leave the fiber specific for the project, it would be three times that bill a whole time.
Right.
But since they probably already have fiber went on near our, we'll be able to see how to achieve.
Where is that running at?
So that's one eighteen, I think, for some days, we come down some, because we have talked to them, they're not.
You guys are.
It's just kind of buffered.
How much?
Hundred and eighteen thousand.
Now, this isn't a firm quote per se, this is a preliminary, where we're asking them, what in ballpark is it gonna come to, you know, so that gives you a good ballpark figure. That way, you can get two, three of them, we can kind of figure out about what it's gonna cost, and then if we actually decide to do this, we can actually define our scope a lot better. You know, say, okay, you know, we have thirty-five things here, we only need, you know, so, this is just a ballpark.
And we're at nine, which I'm not good.
There, there is, and we have not approached the grant administrator yet. Uh, this was in the works before our grant administrator got on board, before I got on board, so.
Immediately, as this was working, we were going over some budget stuff, and somebody mentioned.
That all.
Paying a phone line at every office, and a D S L line at every office, and a community center. If we pull that together in one place, and this home got appeared, per se, you know, per se, there's no more internet cost, and phone cost, I don't know, Cory can take the phone out there, play in the input network, and work off the main system here.
Right.
Have a single number to call, bring the office in the city, press one for here, press two for there.
Right.
It's streamlined and.
Streamlined and simplified, it gives us.
Right.
But.
Plus, I'm gonna need you to slide this.
But once we kind of define our scope a little better, then, then we can really define our price, or get a better definition of what price we're looking at.
And you give a better definition of what it's called per month now, on this present system.
Right.
I saw, when you say it wasn't like thousands, thousands per year, but I, it was something.
Right, right.
And that's what really caught my eye.
Right now, I think we all have D S L, are you sorry about, can you say this D S L through Frontier? Right.
No, no.
No, not Frontier.
V J, I'm sorry, that's Frontier. We, we also use V I, which they use cable.
So we had several offices. And, and we got Frontier coming out with next week.
Wednesday, actually.
Oh, okay, this week, and so we should get another bid, and then we can kind of compare the two. I think there was a third one supposed to come in, but we had a little error, just.
Uh, I think that comes next week.
Okay.
We're still.
All right, but, but we can kind of, this is something we wanna look at, it's not a commitment that we've made, we're just looking to see if it's even worth it.
Right.
Anyway, so we wanted to throw that out. Exactly, gotta have a plan. Uh, some people may have noticed, we have, uh, there's a, a bid in the papers for engineering services. Uh, this was done by our grant administrator also. Uh, this is part of the, uh, community development block grant for our roads. Uh, they automatically, well, they kicked it out after we approved their due slash city council meeting. This is some of the, the fruit that's coming there. They're gonna put that out to bid, the bid will close, uh, we'll take a look at, at the engineering firms. Again, this is gonna be professional services, so price isn't necessarily the bottom line, it's gonna be who we think can do the best job, and we'll get them in here, take a look at them, and then, well, we'll make an award. But, uh, anyway, that way you know what's going on in the paper. Uh, we, we talked about our, our city code, the ordinance, uh, we've talked about that already, do we need to talk about that again? Okay. Now, just in general, our work orders, uh, let's see. The previous period, we had forty-five, this period, we have fifty-two. Uh, we got forty-five completed, seven in progress. We had a fifty percent jump in, in the street department. Uh, water department was a, uh, twenty-eight percent decrease in, in, in our work orders. Uh, property maintenance, uh, this is a new, a new category we guided, uh, and a lot of it's gonna be for mowing, uh, moving of chairs from the community center to different areas. We created this, this line to keep it off the street department, because they were doing a lot of the janitorial work that needs to be done, so. Anyway, and, uh, because we didn't really have any history, we went up two hundred percent, and, so, anyway. Uh, man hours for previous period, twenty-nine fifty, this period, twenty thou, uh, two thousand. So we had our reduction there, regular man hours. We got a bump in overtime, a lot of that was gonna be due to the citywide cleanup. This was the, the, we, the, I hadn't had this, because this is part of our trash, uh, agreement with Republic. Uh, just to see, we went up from twenty-seventeen to twenty-eighteen, uh, say our ninety-six gallon car, this is part of the, the increase that we're having to pay Republic. Uh, and these were negotiated back, and we made a contract. So this'll explain why people have a three percent increase in the water bill. And there's four pages of this that you can, we can get past there. These are just the rates that they charge us. Okay, now we're going to the CDs and the five acts. Uh, we have three CDs, uh, we had one for a hundred thousand, one for a hundred and fifty, and another one for a hundred and ten, total three hundred and sixty thousand. Uh, the one C D had a loan against it, or we had a separate loan, and, uh, we paid that C D off with sixty-one thousand, then, uh, we had a police B S loan, then we paid off a hundred and five thousand. That left a hundred and ninety-two thousand, five hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-six cents. Now, we're going through the bills currently, to see what exactly that was paid for. We have, uh, we're going through the next, the, the three months after this, back in twenty-fifteen, that we're gonna break out each, until we can come out with our hundred ninety-two dollars, hundred ninety-two thousand, five hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-six cents. We have not got that broke out yet.
Was it put in the general fund?
Yes. And I don't know if it was a large piece of equipment, or two or three large pieces of equipment, or if it was just general bills.
I haven't even helped, unless it goes in the general fund or just.
Just absorbed in everything.
Right, but, but, okay, if, if we can go for six months after this, and, and look at our balance, and if there was any major expense, for instance, eighty thousand dollars for a chipper sprayer, or, you know, fifty-three thousand dollars for a backup, okay? So we can also get guidance from the former council that's here, that can identify any major expenditures that this was supposed to go towards.
And that's what I did, I just hope you know.
Right, right, which I, I think that's gonna be the case, we just really need that to know and walk you.
Really, it wasn't the case of us getting too broke, we decided to pass some high interest loans, some loyalty CDs.
Right, basically, at the time, I think the, and it still is, the C D is point five percent. So, and if you're paying five percent, six percent, or seven percent on a loan, it makes sense to go ahead and cash that C D and, and, and pay off that loan, but.
But what we need to do and make clear is, all this was done with the previous city council approved.
Yes, the, the cashing of the CDs.
The C D, the city council at that time knew of this, and they approved of this.
Right. We, we went back in the minutes.
And we went on back and.
And they didn't vote on it.
No. No, they did not vote it.
But they were aware of it.
Yeah, they were very aware of it, they didn't not vote of it, and they, they voted for them to do that.
They didn't vote.
No, they did not vote, they did not vote. They were made aware.
If you look for minutes, unless the minutes were, yeah, doesn't say they voted. I think it was part of regular city manager's course.
Right.
It was might be on here.
I could, if it could have easily been mentioned.
But anyway, they were aware of it, it wasn't something that was just done on any business. They were aware of it.
Right.
October the fifth, twenty fifteen, twenty fifteen.
Yes.
That's when they were made aware of it. And Tommy, that sixty-one hundred to pay off police car.
Well, the minutes have those two back.
That's where the minutes.
Switched. The minutes say sixty-one was police cars, no matter how.
Yeah, yeah, that ain't what. There we go, it switched for me.
So Tom.
Yes, sir.
What I'm hearing is, there was no budget amendments done for these pants. It was, it wasn't taken out of budget, so it wasn't a budget amendment done, so there's no way to track it. She just took it out of savings and paid it, so no budget amendment was done.
That's correct.
No recording of work was taken from. Well, it was a lot of work. Because there wasn't a budget amendment done by the council.
Right, and.
Because it didn't come from the budget, it came from savings.
Right, it went from savings and is put into the general fund.
To pay the, did it go to general fund?
It did.
Why wasn't there a budget amendment done? That's a question.
That is a good question, and that is something else.
I wouldn't see anything about a budget amendment in the nothing amendments that I read through.
They still didn't have a budget amendment, every time you do, you overspend, just like you bought a fire truck recently, this council. You didn't have the funds in the budget to do it. So you gotta do a budget amendment to pay for that truck, even though you took a loan out.
Right.
Because you had to borrow more money and put yourself in more debt. More payments coming up for the next budget year, so that's why budgets are so important, and budget amendments, so. Y'all don't get caught in a trap by the next people saying, what'd you do with that money?
That is correct.
You did budget amendments, it's in there.
Right, that makes sense.
Now, I, I still have the auditor from coming down to, to, to go through our, our, uh, our, our current quotes, uh, to, to help us where we won't have this problem in the future.
Yeah, I don't know how they ever done that one, you just took the money out of savings, paid some, you know, I don't know proof where it comes from, where'd you get that money?
And that's, and that's the problem we have with some of the agencies like Moody's and, well, they're not an agency, but Texas Water Development Board, and, and with companies like Moody who grade our credit, is our, our audit doesn't necessarily line up, because we still need to make some changes in our system. Uh, so, when they come down, we're gonna address all these, these areas where we need to, to make changes. This is what we got, so, and we're still looking.
Uh, this is better. I mean, listen, we can, everybody, maybe we didn't follow procedure, or they didn't, because that time that we messed up on fire, did it?
Right.
Well, it happens, but. To be clear, it wasn't a head on. We was after, yeah, understanding.
Yeah.
Were you budget for the pants of our truck?
What?
Yeah, they're in.
They had a budget line for some money they didn't quite, not use for it, but apparently we should have funded, but it was a classification.
I think more than one budget, you mean?
No, no, actually, it was.
Yeah, a bit less, yeah.
Well, I think they had fifty thousand budget capital expenses in the fire department, you spent a hundred and five.
And that's more.
So you gotta do a budget amendment sometime within, before this budget year ends to balance out.
Right. But we're, I guarantee we're gonna have other budget amendments, so if, yeah. After this audit, we're gonna have.
I certainly think you'll find it repentant.
Yeah.
I think the council just overlooked the fact that didn't do the paper trail, didn't do those amendments, and just need to be corrected.
That's all, yeah, that's the question to me, I, I obviously don't do this, and I don't know about budget amendments and things like this.
Yeah, well, bono, looking like a boat. He didn't spend it, but she got, you gotta say, when you're doing your bookkeeping, we gotta correct this error here, and when the auditor says they're gonna say, what'd you do with that money?
And that's what they're doing now, that is exactly what they're doing now.
And it's hard to remember what you did with it.
Right. So, we'll, we'll get it straight. Uh.
The fact remained, there was no wrongdoing.
No money missing.
No missing money, no, no fee re.
I, I don't. Yes. Yeah.
But there's still a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars to figure out where it went, that hasn't been decided.
That hasn't been decided.
My opinion is it was paid in the street from the...
Oh, in general?
The problem is you can't track it.
Yeah.
Because once you put it into the general fund, it's spent. General fund basically pays your salary, pays everything. Of course. You can show wherever Penny was used out of the general fund, which we have checks, but that money, it's just money. You don't trust that money. It's morphed into the general fund.
But if we can account for a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars of this change in expenditure. You don't know, right? Right. And again, you know, looking at that timeframe in the votes, if there's any large purchases, that might count for a lot of it. You know, for instance, I know it was that time that they paid the law street. Right? That's a chunk of change right there. And it's not one big purchase. It's gonna be materials, you know, so, you know. Right. Right. So, I mean, we don't have a problem finding it. It's just gonna take... We're gonna do those for it. So at least break it down in that way. So no one has ever actually, you know, indicated that he thought there was some wrongdoing. It's just...
That article missed that.
Yeah, and you would though.
Okay. But no one ever came out and said anything, but...
Probably this council refused anything.
Right.
Well, no one in council refused.
But this council is very interested in accounting for it.
It's a obligation to find that.
Right, so...
Well, it's cool. We got a press release that, all right?
Well, we are... We have a press release that options.
I mean, that's somewhat sugarcoated.
It is a little bit.
You know, I just voted it and drifted my cereal bowl and everything. I'm gonna say all the funds, all of... Well, Sam's coming in here. All of it is there for us.
No, no, no. I said, I said, are you talking about the press release?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sam Lowery says that the city council has concluded due to the review of the CDs, please announce that all the funds are...
I would be hard pressed to say that at this point. You didn't write that.
I just get the one...
I would suggest that... I talked to Pat and we come look at it some more and then now we can reissue that.
Because I certainly don't want to see the public anywhere.
Agreed.
One hundred percent.
And notice that. And because we haven't actually been able to account for a hundred and ninety-two thousand, then wait till we do and then...
Well, I would suggest if you're accountable for a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars a piece, do you have a deposit general fund? A hundred and ninety-two?
Don't would you not? We have a fair amount of dollars.
Yeah, so all the money is accounted for. I mean, went into the general fund and you tracked it or somebody's expenditure. I mean, that's... I tell you, there's no way, once it's deposited in there, I mean, it's still her salary and his salary and everything.
I understand, but I can't go and say, "Okay, we estimated X amount of dollars to pay the law street." Okay, and this is basically X amount of dollars of the hundred and ninety-two. And if there was a chipper sprayer that was purchased, then... Because I'm pretty sure it was purchased outright, but funds...
From the general fund.
That from the general fund.
All funds would be spent in the general fund. You're right.
Right.
I just think it's very strange to say we're gonna account for the monies of the general fund. If they're there, they're there, they're accounted for. And how in the world... It doesn't make any sense, I'm sorry, it doesn't.
Well, no, I understand, but if I go and then say, "Okay, all the money's accounted for." And it is, okay, but why did we spend... What did we spend all this money on?
City expenses.
Okay, that's pretty general.
Why was the budget adjusted up a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars? Why couldn't we pay for it without that money in there?
Right, and there was no budget adjustment for it. You see what I'm saying? I mean...
I don't know what the budget adjustment is. I've never seen the budget. Never seen it since the...
No. Y'all recall the budget amendment back in the... But the thing is, yes, we've accounted for the funds that came from the CDs. And we don't think there was any, you know, anything that happened. We just need to come back and say, "We paid the law street. We bought a chipper sprayer. We bought this. We purchased this."
Do we need to say it?
Which...
Do we need to say it at this point? We know the money that went in the general fund was filed.
Yeah, that's what I was saying is...
I'm saying...
There's a problem with that. Do... I mean, I'm asking, do you think it's that necessary to go look for that extra money to be paid?
Well, obviously, the money plays with our general fund. It went in there.
Right.
That's why I told y'all before, I would look at your beginning balances for each year and what you ended up with. That'll give you an idea. You start back from new when he was there. That's... That'll give you an idea of how you were each year before you jump off the deep end. I just don't... I don't want citizens to panic and think that there's some... I mean, I saw that article, and I don't live here, but, I mean, I never had an article. I mean, you know, it implies that there's some fraud going on. And I had this...
Well, where did that article come from?
I don't know.
It's certainly me. Yeah, that's me. And I didn't put down that anybody stole anything, and I didn't... Never said that the whole way. I just put into the paperwork that I had received and that the money was missing and that Tommy was looking for.
And that's the thing, it was never missing. That's what... That's where I think...
I think that's where it was right.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying. That's why I was trying to get everybody to just be thoughtful about it because, I mean, if somebody asked, if you ask Tommy, "Who would you spend in two thousand and nine", you would... You'd say, "I look at the budget and the detailed budget." There's no way you could say...
That's a little of the literature.
So what's missing there, Tommy? Well, of course it wouldn't be. I mean, that's my point is that it implies that our hardworking staff and previous citizens who served in this town were not being willing. And I think that's not fair. I think that's... I think we owe it to them. Just like our future staff and councils have for y'all and you. I mean, it's just, it's the right thing to do.
But there are reasons that paranoia develops. Somebody doing things without council approval or some money with all respect, if they don't need it. One signature cashing in that amount of CD money. One signature. You know, there ought to be at least two signatures, and there ought to be council approval on all of that. There was none of that.
I agree. I agree.
So this guy up here did a great job in that article, I thought. He reported it accurately. And I understand where you're coming from. And there's reason to be paranoid.
Well, I think that that's what we... I just don't believe throwing out words like fraud or corruption are ever a good thing considering the fact that there's no evidence of that whatsoever. I mean, we know there's no money missing. We don't know what all the money was used for that year. I say that for every... Anybody can say what the general fund was used for unless you cut every check that you used from here since two thousand and fifteen. And obviously, that's all I'm saying, but listen, I... I'll audit represent you guys. At the end of the day, I hope that we put the citizens at ease that this is, there's nothing that is untoward at all. I don't think there was ever anything untoward. I agree with Bob. Every CD, every instrument should be one council person, should be the mayor, and a city staff person. And that way, there's always a fixed balance and a roster staff to make sure the staff can use it. But again, there's our audit, and that's what I think...
But that would be rectified at this point.
Well, I think the end of the day is that we need to sit down and come up with, in addition to the six points that our auditors pointed out, which are fine, they're not really anything on earth shattering, you know. None of them in there usually. What I see is all the findings are making sure you don't have one person handling it all the same month. You know, because they look at controls and to make sure people can't take them. That's what these auditors really look for. Because that's really what we're looking for as far as their, you know, broad level issue is making sure there's controls in place to... For example, we have a landfill that's taking a lot of cash. Well, we do handwritten receipt. We found out an employee was creating these receipts at the end of the year, and he would do, "I got nine dollars, only got fifty dollars." And so he poured it one, turned it into nine. Well, we wouldn't have known that. He was there for many years. He did for many years. And then one day, some citizen came in and said, "You know, I think I forgot to get my receipt, and I paid thirty-five." So he came down to city hall, and they started looking, and they said, "No, you only paid eight dollars." "No, I didn't." And so that's when they finally got the check. So that Ralph Bet, auditor's post, make sure you have electronic invoices with a tracking number order. See, also, pulling out a book and not turning it off. So you gotta make it where the employee can't control the outcome of the cash, especially with your cash, because that's easily neutral. But that's the kind of controls. And to me, you know, we need to have better procedures in place for this council of how Tommy spends money, how our staff spends money, all... Because all of you guys are new. And I talk to Jason about this issue a lot of time. You know, he's concerned. I do. Everybody should be concerned on this council. At the end of the day, we just need to make sure that all of us do things that are safe, to make sure these monies are safeguarded as appropriate, since they're not our money. It's the citizens' money. So I think that, you know, I do think that, and Sam and I talked about this. At the end of the day, we've got two new council members, first year, the new one. You've got a new city manager. It's really... Y'all really need to sit down and work out some procedures, like Tommy said. Budget amendments, things like that. You wanna do those at the end of the year? You can do it that way. Budget amendments, of course, are supposed to be only if they're really for unforeseen expenses. You're not supposed to just come in and make wholesale changes or anything. You know, if you don't have control over it and it comes in, that's when you do budget. The point is that when you do that budget first of the year, that's supposed to be what you're spending. And you're supposed to spend more than that. So it is important.
It's actually what you... You have budgets, like you say. They're overspent. So you... In this case, they went to reserves and brought that budget up today so it wouldn't show overspent. Because it will. You rely on abnormal tax. You rely on sales tax. Admoral is normally a given. Sales taxes... I've never seen sales tax high in this city as they're projecting right now in this budget that you're in. I never projected sale tax. You can ask, well, I always kept it two or three thousand dollars under what I thought it would bring to cover those budget amendments. Because it could sneak up on you in a year. The manager gets swarmed by department heads, "I need this, I need that, I need this." And before you know it, that line item is in the red. So you're gonna have to correct it. And if you don't have funds left over... And sales tax is one place I know you can save that without really going to budget or having to go into savings. And I think that's just what our council got caught up in, is they overspent and the money's debts even paid off. They were set up on monthly payments. They didn't have the money to make the monthly payments. Have to go to reserve, so to simple. That's why there's no reserve left. Excuse me?
You... That's a conjecture. You're thinking that's what happened.
Yes, I'm thinking that's...
I don't know.
I don't know anything. No more than everybody else here does.
That's how things get...
Yeah, right.
Your conjecture.
That's how it can come up short. Letting your buzzy get out of hand. But y'all can call that. You don't know it, but it'd be nice if you had a printout every two or three months showing line item expenses and what's left in that budget. Because if you vote to do something and you don't have any money in that line item, you just created a budget amendment. Not that you would intentionally, or Tommy would bring it to you, but like was mentioned earlier, there's things happen that you can't, you know, have no power over. You gotta spend something, something bright, something falling apart, whatever. You can't estimate all those perfect, so... And that's what's happened in the past. No one's done anything, I believe, that was wrong. It's just they done... They spent money and had to go to reserves.
That's the kind of thing that has disturbed me about all of this is the fact that everybody has jumped on this little thing and made it look like that previous city administrator and that council wasn't doing what they were supposed to do. And they knew exactly what they were doing.
They did, and they done more than what they needed to do.
But when it's first, they didn't know that either. You kind of wondered where it went.
Well, no, I'm telling you.
Right, right. So it was like you just... That's what they gave them.
I don't want to get you into that. That those persons were doing something that they weren't so likely that council was aware of.
The only thing, and I told the mayor the other day when I was on here too, and I said, "You know, you're the pivot man because you're the only one left." Although Sam's sitting there. He's in the hot seat.
I think that's something in. As far as managers report. That's all we got left, right? Yes. We should be done there. I'm done. Any questions concerning this comment? All right, let's do the jury. I'm thanking... Okay, we're saying... The jury, you're all like...